July 10, 2023, Board of Selectmen meeting to order. As we always do with tradition, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and continue standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy Cannon served as Abington's library assistant from September 1987 to June 2004. She was a patron favorite, always ready with a smile, and a recommendation for a great book. Nancy provided reference and local history to help many researchers over the years, and she thoroughly enjoyed interacting with the youngest readers. Nancy is remembered fondly by her colleagues and library friends. We also remember Wayne Norling. Wayne Norling passed away at age 90, surrounded by his loving family. After serving in the U.S. Navy, he was a bricklayer for the local four-union and retired from the Abington Park and Recreation Department. His greatest joys were spending quality time with his family, children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. He was an avid gardener and could always be found working in his garden and yard. He was still splitting firewood when he turned 90 last November. He loved Sunday morning drives and exploring different parts of Massachusetts with his son Wayne. He was a proud Abington resident for 64 years and well-known for his quick wit and humor. Wayne will be missed by all, and his memories will live on forever. Thank you. All right, on our agenda, public announcements. Mr. Donovan, do you have any public announcements?
I do, Mr. Chairman, too, if I may. Next Monday, July 17, at 6:00 p.m., there'll be a badge-pinning ceremony for the fire department. Chief Jack Glenn, Deputy Chief Jared Driscoll, and Captain Matt Crowell will take place at the senior center at 441 Summer Street at 6:00 p.m. So I plan on attending, as I'm sure, I hope, I know the town manager and other selectmen probably will as well. Also, on Sunday, August 6, at 1:00 p.m., there'll be the Purple Hat Ceremony to take place at the American Legion. And this year, from what I understand, the Purple Hat Ceremony honors all those residents of the town, current and former, who are recipients of the Purple Hat. But this year, we're going to be honoring former police chief, the late chief, Eddie Murphy, who was chief from 1963 to 1982. A lot of you may recognize the Murphy Club Field is up adjacent to the old Center School, and it was Chief Murphy who was the forerunner of developing the youth football league in town here. And even though the field is known for him, we're going to have an appropriate plaque put on a boulder for that location. The chief was a Purple Hat recipient, a Marine sergeant in World War II, and came back to serve his town, the town well. His son, Jack, is also a Purple Hat recipient, and Jack will be at the ceremony on August 6 to recognize his father. So we're hopeful that anybody in town who remembers the chief, if you want to come down, that would indeed be fitting in properly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Jesper, any public announcements?
I do not at this time.
All right, Mr. DiMaggio?
I have none.
Mr. Chapin?
No, sir.
All right, I do have a couple of quick public announcements. I do want to say again a huge thank you to DPW Director John Stone and the DPW and Veterans Agent Adam Gunn for they fixed the Fitz Memorial. It had needed some help. And also, Abington Fence, who put up the fence and fixed it. It's a great way to make sure we continue to dedicate and support our veterans and especially those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, as Sergeant Fitz did. And also, just also another reminder on the heat mapping and heat watch. This is from Liz, our Assistant Town Planner. Time is running out. We need volunteers to drive and some to ride along and navigate for our heat mapping event. We will be using the Avon Town Hall as a staging area for volunteers. NOAA will provide the equipment that will be attached to your vehicle. See attached, I'm going to show it up here on the screen. It's kind of a little something you can put on your windows so that the getting the temperature. Very, very cool. Let's see, there will be a brief training at Avon Town Hall on Monday, July 17, at 6:30. There are three separate periods during the day in which you can volunteer. Vehicles gathering the data will be equipped with the sensory equipment that I showed up there. You can sign up on the link on the town's website, or you can call Liz Shea at 781-982-0069, or email LShea@AbingtonMA.gov to sign up. That is all I have for public announcements. Are there any public comments from the audience? All right, hearing none. We will go into public appointments, the time being 6:36. We have a continuation hearing to request new license, Class 2, license to add to their commercial garage license at Excel Auto Collision, 123 Center Ave., Gustavo Matos, manager. Do we have the manager here today, Gustavo?
Make a motion to open the hearing.
All right, thank you. Motion to open the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye. All right, all opposed? All right, it's unanimous, the hearing is open. Mr. Gustavo, come on up. Just state your name and address, and tell us what you're trying to do, right up the podium.
Yeah, I'm just trying to open up a new dealership, continuation with our business, so we can get attention to the customers and the people of Abington. I feel like our shop is way in the back, it's kind of hidden, so hopefully this adding, selling cars will advertise our business even more, and we get more customers on the way.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
If I could, you're just requesting the number of cars for sale, five or less, so the maximum of five?
Yeah, we're going to start off, we're just small, we're going to start off by like five. If we start to grow, I'll request if we can expand.
Okay, any hours Monday through Friday, eight to five?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anything else from the board? And it does look like we do have some commentary from the Police and Health Department, giving it the green light, no issues. Scott, was there any commentary from the Building Department or Fire?
I believe there's no...
No issues?
No objections.
All right.
Any new signage planned?
New signage? No, should be the same landlord, which is Anderson Realty Trust.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Move we close the hearing.
Okay, Mr. Donovan makes the motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
There a second? All in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? Unanimous?
I move we grant the license as requested.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor, or any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Unanimous, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks.
All right. The time being exactly 6:40 p.m. Request by Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires, and fixtures on Plymouth Street, 330 feet north of the intersection of Plymouth Street and Jean Carroll Road. I will hear any motions to open the hearing.
Make the motion.
All right, there is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There is a second, Ms. Jesper. All in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? Unanimous, okay, the hearing is open. Is there anyone from the Massachusetts Electric Company, National Grid, and Verizon New England, Inc. here with us today? Come on up to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what you want to do.
Sure, my name's Rob Proud. I actually live over in Holbrook, but our company's located at 200 Ledgedwood Place, Rockland, Mass. So we're running a program to install sensors across Massachusetts. The sensors kind of have to be in a particular spot, so as close to the substation as we can get it. It has to be in a straight line between poles. That street is curving, so we need to install a new pole just to create that straight angle for the feeder monitors.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the board?
How big is the sensor, are the sensors?
So if you look at the top telephone pole, those insulators that the wires sit in, it just takes the place of that. Then there's a small control box, maybe less than two feet by two feet, just sitting about halfway on the pole that they need to get access to.
The new pole will only have the sensor on it, or is it going to connect the wires, or?
Only the sensor, so the primary wires just sit right in the little crook like this, and it just reads the information from there.
That was my next question, what does the sensor actually do?
Yeah, so it just, I could get you the specifics on it, but it basically just reads data from the line. It allows National Grid to be more proactive about outages and just check for inefficiencies in the system.
Okay, how many sensors do you have in the area, is there?
So, it depends on the program, what National Grid's looking to target. I know for that particular substation, I personally installed about three or four. This particular, so once the electricity comes into the substation, it breaks up into a couple different feeders. So you need a feeder monitor for each one of the feeders of the substations that are being targeted. So on neighboring poles, they will have their own feeder monitors, but they just don't require a new pole due to the field conditions.
Okay.
And it does look like we do have some correspondence from Police, Health, and the Building Department. Looks like there appears to be no issues. The only recommendation, though, that the Building Department, the zoning enforcement agent requests, that they file permits in respect to the scope of work accordingly with the controlled construction affidavits required. So with that, Scott, would we need to include that in a motion? Would that need to be part of the?
No, no, thanks, I think you can just motion to approve it.
Are there any comments from the public? And I'll bring it back to the board, anything more? All right, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Unanimous? All right.
I move we grant the petition.
Second.
Thank you, there is a motion and a second. Anything else to be heard? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Unanimous, congratulations. Thank you.
My last name.
Next on our agenda is action discussion items. Vote to approve minutes from June 12, 2023, and June 26, 2023. You have in your packets the June 12, and then Nancy sent to us today the June 26. Does anyone need any more time? We can probably, if you want, we can put the June 26 to a future meeting if you want to review. But if there, I don't see any issue with us approving the minutes from the 12.
I move we approve the minutes on the 12.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Anything else to be heard? All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Unanimous, okay, we approve the minutes from June 12, 2023.
The 26, I have to extend.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Just the three of you that were.
Correct. Does the board want more time to review the minutes, or? We always know Nancy does a great job. Our administrative assistant, so.
I'm okay to vote now.
All right, that's fine. All right, does anyone want to make that motion to approve the minutes from June 26?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Suzanne makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any other, anything else to be heard on the matter? All in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? And to abstain, okay. The minutes approve. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have request for appointment to Veterans Memorial Trustees. We have Mr. Peter Walters. Let's see. Peter, you are here, did you want to get up and?
Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Don't worry, I have it in my script. My name is Pete Walters, 157 Green Street, and I'm a 34-year veteran of the Army and Army Reserve. I wish to serve as a Veterans Memorial Trustee so that I can assist in honoring the memory of those who have served our country as guardians of our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Is there any discussion from the board? I will hear any motions?
I'll make a motion to appoint Peter Walters as a memorial trustee. I served with Pete on the fire station on the DPW committee, and I know he's very diligent and a very hard worker, so.
I'll second. Very, very. All right, there is a motion and a second, anything else to be heard? All in favor, say aye. 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 All opposed? Unanimous, congratulations, thank you. Peter, thank you for your service. Next on our agenda is request for one-time outdoor benefit event on Sunday, September 17, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Lynch's Tavern, 236 North Ave., with band and alcohol to be served outside. You will see. Yes, is Mr. Lynch here?
Yeah.
Come on up, state your name and address.
Bill Lynch, 204 Peregrine Road, Abington.
All right. All right, so it looks like you're trying to do an outdoor benefit with banned alcohol to be served?
Yeah.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can you just describe for us where this is going to be outside?
It's going to be, I have actually a pretty good-sized flat area up on the building, and it's going to be a one-shot deal. We kind of did it to honor three friends of ours that have passed away in the last couple of years, so I figure if we're going to do that, let's make some money and, you know, donate to a couple of charities.
Awesome.
So you want all that land out back?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not fenced in or anything?
It's fenced in on one side.
On one side, what's the other side?
The other side is the neighbor that abuts it, who's the ex-owner and my best friend, so I don't think we're going to have any problem with that.
The fence is on the tracks, obviously.
Yeah, if you're facing, if you're up behind my building and you're facing the very back like this, it's the railroad fence, it's on the left-hand side.
Got your fence, and then the other side's open.
Right.
Would you be opposed to putting up some caution tapers, just something to?
Oh, we'll do something like, yeah.
Yeah, just to make some sort of barrier.
We had kind of discussed that anyway, we kind of knew that we were going to have to do something like that. Definitely, no problem at all.
Awesome.
We did have some questions from the Building Department. How are you going to be dealing with the parking overflow?
Street, New England, you know, it's on a Sunday. You know, I mean, we're a fairly busy place, and we don't have too much trouble with the parking, so.
There's plenty of parking around.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be an issue. New England, I don't even know who owns it now, but they're very good about it, you know. You know, we got on the street on the other side, and the breakfast joints will be closed by then, so. To be honest with you, I didn't even think of that.
I don't think, I wouldn't either. I mean, they got that parking over by the depot, is that public parking?
Yeah, that's all public.
That's all public.
I don't know near the depot, the depot's got a couple of spaces that are lined up.
Down there, I meant, up on that side of the tracks. Up there, there's like 20 spots.
Up toward the street, up toward North Ave.
Yeah, there's like 20 spots across from Old Town Cafe.
Those are definitely all, that's definitely public.
Plus the street parking, is the street legal there?
It's a four-hour event, so I don't see there being too much.
We're actually going to have the raffle right afterward, so it could run to 5:30, but the band will shut down at 5:00. So it could run, you know, the raffle's probably going to take a half an hour, we'll probably be out of there by 5:30.
Scott, what was the, any word from the Police Department or Fire Department?
No, we haven't heard anything back from the police chief. And the Fire Department said they need more information.
Okay, the Fire Department has said they needed more information, okay. Yeah, no, just from the information we just have here, just as the departments are just concerned, just having an outside event that close to the tracks.
But there is a barrier.
Yeah.
Did you say you had an event there before, an outside one?
No.
No.
I'm one and done with this.
And then, do you think, how do you think it's going to work with like bathrooms and? Do you think it's going to be?
We'll get the bathrooms inside, we're going to have tables, chairs, tents. But, you know, there could be a little line for the bathroom for sure, if we get enough people, but. They're going to, actually, everything's going to run from the inside of the building.
Yep.
You know, the drinks will be served there, we'll watch them outside, I'll be outside watching.
And you said you're going to put a tent up for it, or?
Yeah, we're going to put tents and chairs. I've got a friend of mine owns a company, and he's going to donate everything, so that's a huge expense he's going to save.
That's a pretty good, yeah.
We're going to.
I wonder if you could.
Serve food.
I wonder if you could almost put a. Put a tent aside on the tent on the railroad side, if that's.
There's a fence there.
Yeah.
Billy, are you going to keep it out back, or is it going to go where Ida Dombrowski's house was in the?
No, it'll be out back, Kevin, there's no way we're going to let it spill out front.
Okay, the only concern, I'll tell you honestly, the only concern I have is before I got on the board, the board was, made a big pitch to the MBTA about train safety. And we were serving alcohol outside at that location, hence the issue of the fencing there and so forth. I think it would be.
I could, Kevin, I could put someone there.
Yeah, well, I think there's got to be some sort of a.
We're planning on, at the end of the, at the end of the building, you know, on the left-hand side. I'm going to have.
That's open right now.
Yeah, I'm going to have a table there, they can walk down there. But I'm going to have a table there with a couple of the girls working it, and nobody's going to be able to get out front.
What about on where Ida's house was, is that?
On what?
Where Ida Dombrowski's house was, is, was. Right next door to you, you can access the back route there, and then there's the parking lot out front. Are they going to be spilling out into that parking lot in front of her house?
I don't really know where you're talking.
If you're looking at your building.
Yeah.
To the right.
Yeah.
The house right there.
You could have pulled up a nice map, Scott.
I have one on my phone, I have it up on my phone.
My intention is to keep everybody out back.
Okay.
Or in the bar. But as far as people, you know, walking across the street with drinks and that stuff, we'll police that.
Yeah, that's, I think.
Oh, I see, now.
If, I know we're, well, let me ask the board a question first. Is, are we going to have a majority of us at the fire department pinning ceremony?
I plan on going.
Yes, I would be going.
Well, my point is this, is that we don't have a report from the fire or the police chief. And I think, given the history that the prior board took in terms of advocating with the MBTA about train safety, I really, really think that this, that their input needs to be had before we make a decision. And I don't think it's prudent for us to turn around and simply say it's approved subject to their approval, because that's passing the buck. The buck stops here. Let them tell us what their recommendation is. As we sit here tonight, we don't have that. So if we're going to have a majority of the board at the pin ceremony next week, we can simply post a quick meeting prior to the six o'clock at 5:30, after we get their report and make that consideration. But given the fact that the town has made the train safety an issue, I think we really need for the record their recommendations to us before we take this step. I understand what Billy's saying, I understand he's going to police it, I know the property well. You know, he's on .29 acres of land there, and I know the congestion that's in that area, but I really do think that we should at least have their reports before we make that decision. That's where I stand.
Why don't we go from there, and, you know, you guys just let me know what you need from me.
Yeah, it'd be, I mean, if, that's my opinion, that's up to the board to vote.
I agree, I agree with you.
It'd just be one week.
Yeah, I agree with you, totally agree with you. I don't want to, you know, without approval from the police and the fire department, I don't want to do it anyway.
Did the fire department say anything more than this email?
And the attendance, like, you know, is there a limited attendance?
No, they just, they don't have it, and they don't.
Yeah, there's a big difference between 200 people and 500 people.
I'm not thinking anything at all, like, I'm thinking maybe, I'll tell you what, if I get 100, I'll be real happy. But, who knows? I've never, I've never had one there before, and I don't plan on having one again, so I really don't know.
I don't see the issue with making a motion contingent on police and fire approval. If that's the only thing holding it up, why post another meeting? It doesn't seem necessary. In fact, I'll make a motion that we approve this contingent on fire and police approval.
I mean, I'm with Tim here, I mean, I think the only thing is if you could, if you could submit a, just for fire and police or whatever, some sort of basic map for them to see whether you lay it out.
Copy of the plot plan or something, would that help?
Or just something for you to show them.
I'm sure they can drive it.
Yeah, I'll just get a copy of the plot plan.
Or they can drive up, too, I mean.
They'll come by the property and take it.
I'm surprised it happened yet, that's, you know.
Talk to Billy about his plans.
I see them both.
I know you have, yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman, I'll make a subsequent motion to postpone for one week to July 17.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor. Mr. Chapin made that, made a motion to approve pending the approval, pending on communication from the police and fire. Mr. Donovan has also made a motion to post, to wait a week.
That needs a second.
I would second Tim's motion.
All right, Mr. DiMaggio seconds Mr. Chapin's motion. Is there a second on Mr. Donovan's?
I'll second Mr. Donovan's.
All right, Mr. Donovan makes that.
I'd like to hear what the fire and the police, their opinion before we approve.
Yeah.
Is there any other, so there are two motions on the floor, is there any discussion before we go take any votes?
No, I just want to say, I mean, I, you know, you are here tonight, you've given us a ton of information. You're, you've been a business owner in town, you haven't had any real issues, there's a fence there. I understand the train safety 100%, but it sounds like you have it under control, like, you know. Sounds like you have everything.
Don't worry, it'll be under control.
You know, and again, there's plenty of times the police and fire have gone out to the sites, and it's pending them, we've done this years and years, so.
You know, I will say that, you know, I completely understand both sides of this, I really do. But I do think that we as a board have taken, in a number of years, the importance of the train safety with the number of accidents that have happened. And I know the MBTA has been working with the fire and our police department to make sure that things are safe, and the fire and police do want to have that dialogue. So I do think it's important, as to Mr. Donovan said, that we do have their input. But I.
I think we do.
I don't see them having a problem with the situation, but I would value their input.
Like I said, we'll police it very well.
All right.
Yeah.
Both motions require police and fire input.
You don't want to be surprised in the end, where you say 100 people, and when the word gets out, and you seem like a really nice guy, there might be 200 people, and that's a juggle for them, and they've seen this before.
Why don't we talk?
All right, so we have two motions on the floor. Mr. Chapin's was made first. That Mr. Chapin's motion is on the floor. All right, so we have two motions on the floor, um, Mr. Chapin's was made first, that, Mr. Chapin's motion is on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
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 All right, so, actually, I'm gonna do a roll call for the, for the yays and the nays. On Mr. Chapin's motion, uh, Mr. Donovan?
No.
Mr., uh, Ms. Jessburg?
No.
Mr. Hagerty is no, Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio is yes, Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
All right, it is, uh, two to three, the, the motion fails, uh, now we go to, uh, Mr. Donovan's motion. All in favor of Mr. Donovan's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, I will do a roll call, um, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Ms. Jessburg?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Chair votes aye.
No.
Thank you, Mr. DiMaggio, Mr. Chapin?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chi, yes, okay, so that is, um, four one, all right, thank you, Mr. Most, uh, Mr. Donovan's motion passes. We should be, we should have something for you, uh, next week.
All right, if you, uh.
If we get a majority there.
You got my contact info?
Yes.
If you need anything from me.
Yeah, I, I don't see, if, you're welcome to show up if you want, Bill, but I think we've got all your information, we just need theirs.
All right.
And Scott will get.
Let me know. All right, like I said, guys, I do, I wanna reiterate, it's gonna be well policed, I'm gonna ask all my doormen to volunteer their time, so.
Oh, we know you have it covered, you know, we know.
And I'll be there, so.
And you'll be there.
Thank you.
You might show up too.
Yes.
Yeah. At the badge bank.
Thanks, guys.
We'll say hello.
Thank you.
Take care, guys, good luck with it.
Next on our agenda is a vote to call for a special town meeting to be held on Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And to open the warrant for the special town meeting, said warrant to be closed on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Scott, do you wanna touch a little bit about the special town meeting?
Yeah, um, right now, we expect to have, um, a request from the development group for Southfield redevelopment, uh, Southfield up, Union Point. Expect them to come out and, uh, request some zoning changes. And we have the fire department, DPW Building Committee will be, um, seeking funding for that project.
All right.
I would make a motion, we call a special town meeting for Saturday, October fourteenth at nine AM to be held at Avon and High School, and to open the warrant, uh, and for the warrant to be closed on August twenty eighth.
All right, Mr. Donovan makes that motion, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Jessburg makes the second, is there any other motions to be heard, or any other further discussion? All right, all in favor of, uh, opening, uh, to call for the special town meeting and to, to open the warrant and to close the warrant on August twenty, uh, August twenty eighth, excuse me.
Is all in favor?
All in favor, say aye, sorry, aye, all opposed? Unanimous, okay, perfect. Vote to call for a ballot election, uh, next item, agenda, agenda item, vote to call for a ballot election for debt exclusion to be held on Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Scott, do you wanna elaborate on this too?
Yeah, so, um, you know, assuming things are successful at the special town meeting and we authorize funding for the DPW Fire Station project, we'll need to have a ballot vote for that debt exclusion. And that ballot would be the following Saturday.
Okay.
And just, if I could, too, on that question, um, because if, if it is successful on, at the special town meeting, the conclusion, one way or the other, would, has to be by the ballot and that has to be done before we submit the recap sheet to the Department of Revenue. So the timing aspect of this is such that we don't have much choice in the matter, because if we were to wait, we're not gonna get our recap sheet in, you know, and so forth, so it's, uh, it's one of those issues, unfortunately, we, time is not on our side, so we have to be prudent and call it ahead of time. And with that, I'll move we, uh, have a debt exclusion, uh, election on Saturday, October twenty-first, polls open eight AM to six PM.
All right, there is a motion on the floor by Mr. Donovan, is there a second?
A second.
All right, there is a second by Ms. Jessburg, any other motions to be heard? All right, uh, all in favor of, uh, to call a ballot election for a debt exclusion to be held on Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, eight AM to six PM, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, unanimous? And next on our agenda is, uh, vote on year-end transfers, Scott.
So you should all have your transfer sheet in front of you, um, this isn't unusual, it's not unusual that we, we do have this every year. At the end of the fiscal year, when we close out, we have some accounts that, um, that went over on their allocation for one reason or another, and then others that did not spend all of their, um, whether it was revenue or their salary expenses, so they have, uh, money left over. So this is just moving money around, uh, from last year, it's not new money or allocating new money. For the most part, what you'll see in there, uh, the biggest one really was the fire salaries and that was a, um, a direct result of the new contract. And, you know, you'll see some other, uh, minor expenses in there. The police salaries is where we're taking, uh, most of that money from, um, as you know, and, and as we've talked about, is we've not filled all the positions that were vacant over in the police department for various reasons, and so they ended up with a surplus of revenue. So, um, what you'll see there is obviously where we are, um, taking from, uh, police salaries to, uh, backfill, um, town manager salaries, which, um, was partially my contract that was approved after, uh, the budget had been set. Um, we have some, a minor, um, adjustment for the assessors' salaries and expenses, we had an upgrade to, um, the vision software that was unanticipated, um, some IT expenses, overtime in the town clerk, uh, department, election salaries, uh, conservation expenses, planning board salaries. We actually had, um, had given, um, the assistant town planner, uh, more hours, um, earlier than we probably should've and that resulted in this. Uh, zoning expenses, town office salaries, um, we had to, we weren't, you know, we just needed to increase the hours and the time that we had of custodian on house, in-house. You could see there was a, uh, North River Collaborative, the expenses were higher than anticipated and our fire salaries, again, that was due to the retro portion of the new contract. And, um, we had our veteran agent salaries that we had, um, a stipend that we actually paid to, um, uh, during training for the newer system. Um, then you'll get down to the next one, we have taken from snow and ice and, uh, snow and ice expense line and, uh, police salaries expense line to go into snow and ice salaries. We take from, uh, police salaries and our liability insurance expenses. With, this was our, our first year with Maya, so we ended up with, we had anticipated, you know, going into that first year, not really knowing what our, um, full expenses were gonna be, so we did have plenty extra in there. That we can use to offset our town council expenses and, um, the seventy thousand dollars in our town council expenses is we did have, um, a couple of, uh, big investigations that went on this year, plus we had, um, pretty much a rewrite of three of the largest contracts between police, fire, and, um, DPW. Um, the water, although that's, uh, money that comes through water, we still have to approve it, so, um, oh, and the town office expense, where you see the hundred fifty thousand dollars for higher utility costs, is that is a, um, we have solar, uh, credits that we get and the, the credits, as we typically sell the extra credits off, um, but because of the, uh, the, just the way that the market is right now, um, the, nobody was buying them, so we actually had a hundred, o, over a hundred and fifty thousand extra. The prices went up for energy and without people buying the solar credits, um, we couldn't offset it this year. We don't anticipate that to be a problem, next year, we do obviously anticipate a slight drop in, um, utility costs, but we also know that we have a commitment from Avon to go back to purchasing more, um, and they were our primary customer for our, uh, solar credits. Um, and then the last one is just civil, civil, uh, defense, we take them from expenses and putting into salaries.
All right, thank you, Scott.
And these have already been approved by, uh, Finance Committee.
I was just gonna ask.
Yep. We went, met with them last week, they've approved them and, um, we can get this closed out and close out the books for the year.
Good. Any comment or questions from the board?
No, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion, but then I have just one question after that. I'll make a motion, we approve the transfers as delineated in one, two, three, four, and five, taking from the accounts to the left and to the, uh, to the respective accounts as noted. And then the only question I have is, um, for FY twenty-four, the, the amount of money that we're utilizing out of police salaries, I understand the positions weren't filled, have those positions now been filled in that they're on the street?
Um, the positions have been filled, but also positions were, uh, taken out of that budget that we knew that we weren't going to fill.
Okay, so we're.
There is, yeah, we're, we'll be, we'll not have that.
So for FY twenty-four, we're, we're, we have the personnel back, if you will, the?
Uh, we're shy too, um, but we actually, um, took positions away, um, at least five positions have been eliminated for now.
Okay.
That we have to put back in.
Okay.
Though that we'd like to put back in, but again, they're, they were, the Finance Committee, and when we looked at it, was, it was just the fact that we weren't going to be able to fill them and we had a hefty contract that we had to fill.
Okay, there we go, that's my motion.
No one for Finance wanted to say anything here tonight?
They were good.
Okay.
Thank you, so, Mr. Donovan has made a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Chapin makes a second, any other motions to be heard? All right, all in favor of, um, Mr. Donovan's motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Unanimous. Next on our agenda is review and vote on updated financial policies. You will see the financial policies, um, update that Scott gave us, uh, in your packets. I've also included, um, just some recommendations that I've, I've given and I've talked to Scott, uh, given to Scott about too, uh, but I'll refer to Scott about, um, the finance, uh, finance policies, financial policies, excuse me.
Yeah, I, I've not had a chance to look at the proposed edits and I think you folks probably haven't had them long enough, so if you wanna take a look and make any recommendations, um, this is the product that I put out and gave to you, you guys, um, was something that, the, uh, original version came out of, uh, Ducksbury. We handed it out quite a while back and, um, some of the comments that I got was it wasn't really tailored enough and it was too much of a cut and paste, um, that didn't really necessarily fit Abington properly. So we, we did take that and, and, um, the Finance Director and myself had met with, actually, we brought in a consultant who, um, was the Finance Director and one of the original, um, authors of these plans and was also, um, he was also President of the, like, Mass Financial Association and we spent a lot of time actually coming up with what I had given you for that version, that sort of is much more tailored to, to Abington and giving us more of a, you know, a broader framework to work with. And the whole point being, it's not that we wanted something so rigid and so, um, so, so, you know, stiff that it didn't allow us to work, but we need to remember that, you know, folks from this group, uh, my position, the, um, you know, Finance Committee members, they do change and they change quite often. Uh, so this sort of just gives everybody that kind of guideline that, you know, we'll survive and go forward. Uh, they haven't been updated since two thousand and six, so it's not, uh, you know, we do have financial policies in place, uh, they're not, the, the change is not going to be dramatic, some of the basic principles will be the same. So, um, if you folks wanted to take your time and, and look at it and make any other recommendations, like I said, I haven't really had a chance to look at the ones that, uh, um, Mr. Hagerty put forward.
I, I would prefer, um, you know, because this is a, a great step in the right direction, I think it would be great for us to review what we have, what you've proposed to us, um, and, and not only that, uh, but it gives an opportunity for everyone on the board here to look at it. Um, if there are any recommendations that the board has, looking at the old policy, if they want something from the old policy, they feel that that would be appropriate in the new updated, um, also to review what I, what I presented to you. Uh, my recommendations for the financial policy, um, you know, I think we, we wanna make sure, you know, we, we do this right, we, we get this solid. So I, I, I would preferably prefer, uh, not to vote on what's proposed to, uh, what's proposed as of right now. I think I would like to give the opportunity to hear some feedback, um, from the board, um, and if any, you know, anyone wants to look at other policies, uh, financial policies of other communities to see, uh, if there's something that we wanna incorporate.
Scott, how does this policy, um, intertwine with the charter and the bylaws, I mean, there must be overlap from other parts?
There's, and actually, that was one of the things that I did in the final version that I handed out, um, we actually, so there are some things that, that would overlap, but there's also, we, we tried to make an effort to.
But you've looked into that already with this?
Oh, yeah.
With, like you said, that, who'd you, who'd you bring in?
His name's John Madden, he was the Finance Director, um, and, and actually, he was the Finance Director in, in Ducksbury for years, but he's also currently, um, a consultant and he works for a lot of different communities and at one point, he was, uh, President of that Finance Directors Association. A, a very bright guy, um, very helpful at this and, and I do agree, you know, it was well worth the exercise of, um, of trying to tailor it to fit our community.
Absolutely, yeah, well, like you said, that and then, again, it affects multiple other areas that my work, I changed one and I, it affects ten of the policies, so it's tough when you gotta try to entertain, intertwine that language, but I'm glad that, that John Madden, he sounds like he's a professional and knows what he's doing, so.
Is this one, this one, Alex, that's in our packet?
Yes.
Is this, so, just changes or did you just rewrite it your own, like?
No, 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 so what I, what I have in your pa, what you have in the packet is I, and I sent this, uh, in an email to Scott, um, to replace, um, the, or the, the page one in the, the, the one that Scott proposed to us, um, just with, with.
So you, are you changing like?
Language.
Introduction and purpose section right here?
Correct.
And then you wanna change the budget policy section that's inside of here?
So part of, as, when we were talking about June twelfth, we're talking about the charter review, um, a lot of the things that I wanted to see if we could, um, recommend to the charter review, the, the board was unanimous that, you know, that they did not fit, um, a, a, a charter review or it would have been too forceful on a charter review. So I wanted to present to the board, uh, my recommendations, uh, 'cause we also did mention on the twelfth, um, that whether or not, you know, for the charter, no, but, uh, it could possibly be adopted for financial policies or for, uh, the, the selection handbook. So I have presented it as, um, but I, again, like, I.
So those two sections?
Yeah, those two sections.
And then where did you get your information from?
Uh, so that I, I incorporated from the, um, town of Norton.
So this is from Norton?
Yes.
Just them, did you look at multiple towns?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and Norton was the best, or you?
Norton was the best.
Okay, was they, was it just the most elaborate or, what, what was the difference between Norton and the other towns, anything? What, what was like, what stuck out to you at Norton that got you here?
No, I, I just thought, laying out more specifically what, for, what our role is.
That's just saying Norton, Norton was the most aligned, the most detailed towards Abington?
Correct.
You, you picked up on that, okay.
Yes.
What are the towns that you look at, do you remember them or no?
Uh, I forget off the top of my head.
Oh.
There were, there were, there were dozens that I looked up, so.
All right, if you remember a couple, let me know, 'cause I'd like to look at them as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Kind of see, you know?
Well, no, and, but this is why I wanted to, I did not want to have the vote tonight, so you could review it, if there was something that you want. so you could review it. If there was something that you wanted to...
Yeah.
Look at for, for specifically for financial policies, like Scott was saying, you know, we have not, um, updated them since 2006, so...
Well, I agree, just like I said, if you looked at some, that's why you've already been in this, I just would like to look at the ones you looked at, if you remember.
Sure.
I'll, I'll take a look at Norton's, but, uh, just to see where you, what you were getting, 'cause I think it's great.
Yeah, no, and there were, there were other things that I...
It's very detailed and laid out, that's why I was curious about it.
Is there anything specific, Alex, that you, that's in this, that's not in this, that, is there like something specific or just the whole thing?
Uh, the whole thing.
Okay.
Just, yeah, I mean, yeah, okay.
What do you think this is lacking, the, the one that the town manager and...
I didn't say that, that anything was lacking. I think it would be more beneficial for us, you know, with laying out what specific, what the policies are, um, and what, what our role is.
So you just think this is more specific? I just, before I read it?
Yes, more specific, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks. I just didn't know if there's something I should be looking for when I read it, okay?
Nothing sneaky.
No, 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 that, that...
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's what I was asking too.
Yeah.
This right here is a half page, yours is a page and a half, and then the budget policy, same thing, budget policy is what?
So you, you...
National Panda Day in, in April.
So your, your, yours aligns with this, it's just more specific?
Yeah.
Yes.
This...
I haven't, I, I haven't read it yet.
One, one more thing, and not to, there's an introduction here, but there's also an introduction before the budget policy. Is this one?
Well, Scott, are we, with the old policy that is included in the packet, are we still incorporating the old policy, or are we just going from what strictly?
This is a standalone policy.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so what Scott just said was, we're not, he, what he, what Scott is proposing to us is to use the, the, the...
The draft on the front here?
The draft in the front.
Would not use on this?
No, that, that's the...
To replace that, to replace the original.
Yeah, that's, so you, that's what we have existing.
This is what you propose, this is what Alex proposed, this will be existing, okay?
And that's existing, correct.
So...
I think I circled the top, so it would, it shows when it was adopted.
On the fly with that. Okay, perfect.
So, does the board want, does, I, does the board want to have any vote tonight to vote on these financial policies that Scott presented to us, or, uh, do we want to continue to, to review?
Sounds like we have some homework to do.
I'd like to review.
Yeah, I don't see it being, again, we're not, yeah, we're not getting into budget season for a while, so you have time.
We're always in budget season, aren't we?
I am.
Feels like it.
Feel like it's all we talk about.
Yeah, we'll be getting to that in a minute.
Alright, so I will postpone that, um, to a future meeting. Alright, so.
Next on our agenda is, uh, MBTA Advisory Board Representative update. Um, I do have a couple of few things. Um, the MBTA has conducted work on the seven railroad grade crossings in Abington. As residents have noticed, the MBTA has added cross stripping through the dynamic envelope of the crossings, additional, uh, addition of the bullards, um, especially on Burt Street, uh, so cars cannot turn on to, uh, the tracks, onto the rocks. Um, upgrading the lighting from eight-inch, uh, incandescent bulbs to 12-inch LED lights, uh, warning lights, excuse me, uh, and suicide help line signs. Uh, the health department has been promoting Operation Lifesaver, uh, train safety at town hall and through social media, um, and there will, and there will be more information to come. Um, there will be a joint, um, joint communication with the MBTA and the town of Abington. Uh, and again, I just wanna say, you know, thank you to the cooperation, uh, for the cooperation with the MBTA, uh, and also our fire department, our police department, our DPW, uh, our town manager, um, for, for all this work. It's not, you know, it's, it's been a long process, and we're so glad that, you know, we can see some, some change happening. So, uh, thank you to everyone, you know, the, uh, teamwork makes the dream work. So, uh, that's all I have, um, for an update on that. Are there any questions or comments from the board or the public?
I just have one on that. Is there a representative that you've talked to at the MBTA specifically?
Yes.
I mean, 'cause we're talking about the trains here and the Lynch's Tavern earlier, it, maybe, I mean, I think maybe you should reach out to them and ask them what their thoughts are about events next to, 'cause it sounds like that's gonna be more prevalent. So if any businesses along the train tracks wanna host an event, maybe you should get some input from this person at the MBTA, kinda see what they say.
I think that's a very good idea.
That's a great idea.
And rather than, I would suggest the town manager contact the MBTA to, to get an official, uh, response from them in regards to that. I, I like that, actually, very good.
Yeah.
I like that, too.
If, if there are any ways, uh, Scott, that they can do that before Monday, if they can just give you some sort of a, a field for it anyway.
Yeah, I, I would imagine, um, they'll probably be pretty specific about where their right-of-way begins to...
Right, yeah. No, no, I, I realize that.
I just, there's a lot of businesses, and I, I can't imagine that it's, it's gonna be a future thing as well, so we get some input on it.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I like that. Thank you, Kevin.
Glad I thought of it.
Yep.
Both of you. Glad Kevin thought of it.
Alright. I guess there's no other further discussion on that. Um, we have a town manager report.
Um, alright, well, some of the, uh, bigger issues that we've been having are all revolving around air conditioning, um, and boiler replacements. So we have the boiler that went in the library, and so we're looking at figuring out, A, how we're gonna pay for it, and B, um, getting it done. It's well in excess of $80,000, but we have to get it done, um, in short order, probably by the end of the summer.
Is that the original boiler?
Yeah.
From 20 years ago?
Yeah, and that's kinda, you know, sort of what we're running into, um, that building, this building, senior center, there's just a lot of older, original equipment, and it's at that end of its lifespan. Uh, we're saying thing here, it's our main unit, uh, you probably don't notice it, but the air conditioning's not really working too good in this building.
Oh, we notice.
So that's approximately, right now, we're looking at over 100,000, probably close to 150,000 dollar replacement on that. Um, we did have a, another unit went out at the senior center where, um, I did get an emergency waiver from the state that we could, um, you know, uh, not go through the whole procurement of advertising and, and waiting weeks before, uh, hiring somebody. So I believe they were starting today or tomorrow to get that unit fixed, but that's been out for, um, probably a week and a half, maybe two weeks now. So, yeah, we're, we're working on that. We're also trying to leverage what we have in, um, in some of that, uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds for these projects. Um, we're working with the green communities because there is also, um, uh, some sort, some funding out there, if you use heat pumps and some grant money out there, so we're trying to make it all work. In, in the interim, uh, some of the offices downstairs, we've gotten some portable air conditioning units that will get us through, uh, at least here at town hall. Uh, bridge project, it's, uh, I was out there today. They're probably three to four weeks away from finishing. Uh, it's actually, uh, about on schedule, maybe, I don't think it'll be ahead of schedule, but it doesn't look like it'll go beyond the schedule. Uh, budget-wise, they're doing fine, it's coming in in budget. Um, there was some concerns brought to my attention by the Conservation Commission on, um, there was a pipe that may or may not be in the water, pipes, uh, their Verizon has a conduit that runs under the bridge that they chose not to replace, and the conduit, the pipe isn't, that it's, um, that the conduit's encased in, or the actual, um, covering is a cement-asbestos type pipe. So there were some pieces where, um, that we did actually have, have a consultant out there, a third-party consultant out there today from, uh, Green Environmental, who took a look, and he did find some small pieces that were in there. Largely, it appears that the main conduit is intact and it is being, uh, supported, but they do have to come up with the cleanups, a cleanup plan for it. Uh, there's not a lot of it in there, but, and there are, uh, boons in the water, uh, downstream that are designed to collect anything that does fall in there. Uh, but we will go through that process. We've, um, I actually, uh, was, reached out to Verizon, um, to tell them to come down and take a look at this, and they did get back to me today. They will have one of their engineers out there also, uh, to look at whether they have to rewrap the pipe or do whatever, but, um, whatever it is, we're gonna get it taken care of, uh, you know, get, keep that project going.
Did, did they say how long it would take to do the cleanup?
Oh, it'll be done pretty quickly. Uh, they have, so he's working on, in fact, he's working on a plan now. He's gonna make a report to give that I can send over for Concom to look at tomorrow. Um, and he's submitting, he's, he's submitting a, um, uh, work plan to DEP either, uh, later today he was gonna do it, or it'll be submitted tomorrow. DEP will review it and decide, you know, if they need to add to it or whatever. Um, his conversation with DEP was that they, you know, they'll make, they'll, they'll make sure it gets done quickly. Um, you know, we've impressed upon them that, obviously, this is a, a, a major road that has access, that we need the access for fire, uh, police, DPW, um, and I'm sure the residents are probably looking forward to having it back too. So, um, you know, we'll make sure that everything keeps moving forward as far as that goes, anything we need to do, we'll take care of it.
And I know there have been some, um, comments or, or concerns from residents on social media and things like that, saying, you know, the, the length of the, of the project, and, you know, this project was supposed to take 19 weeks. Um, this, this bridge needed to be repaired, uh, sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I saw this.
So, you know, and it's, I think it's...
The beams that came out of there were really, we're very lucky that we finally got this going, because...
Exactly. Yeah, no, and it's, it's, it's important, you know, do it, you know, we would all, we all would like to have it done fast, um, but I think more importantly, I think done right. Um, so, and I, and that's, it sounds like, that sounds like that's what we're doing here. Um, you know, and again, I, I kinda wanna give a, a shout-out to DPW for, I know they have been pushing, um, for this repair, for this bridge for a long time, because it was in, uh, dire need.
Yeah, yeah, and, as you know, I mean, it sat with, um, the state waiting for approval for a good two years, so...
Is the, is, while this cleanup, is, is it on a pa, is the project on a pause?
That, but I have not gotten anything from Concom or DEP to say that we have to stop. Matter of fact, the conversation with, uh, you know, with my, our consultant that we hired today in DEP was, it was more that, like, we have to see the plan.
Okay.
See what you're gonna do, make sure that you're moving forward, and, and now, you know, obviously, my concern, Concom's concern, DEP's concern will be that, you know, pipe as it remains there, um, you know, I, I, I feel that, you know, Verizon should come down and, and resecure that themselves, or rewrap it, or do something to protect that, so we don't have anything happen, you know, when we do reopen this bridge. There's still, you know, there's a bit of, uh, like I said, a bit of work, three to four weeks. They were waiting on some, there was some issue with the, um, cement contra, uh, the cement supplier on, on a specific mix of something that they needed, but I think they've overcome that, and they're, they're ready to continue. Alright.
If I could, as, as long as, um, I, I, I just wanna put my two cents worth in, in terms of the town's positioning and, and other town boards too, that if we have an issue here that we're moving forward on, I would want, not want to see anything that would derail that, you know, in terms of, um, you know, throwing a, uh, something in the mix here, because I think if everybody's going in the same direction, then I think it behooves us to get the job, finish the abatement, but get the job done, and, and any unnecessary delays. Um, you know, the people have been inconvenienced enough, we have to, you know, obviously, get the bridge repaired, but I don't see, think from a bureaucratic standpoint, um, that we need any delays from the town's end of things. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, Scott's working on it, and hopeful that we can continue in that vein without any, any further disruptions.
But keeping safety in mind. I know, it's not rush, it's not rush.
Not rush.
I, I'm fine with keeping the bridge closed if it's safety.
We're doing it right.
I don't want the residents to think that we're...
No, again, we're bringing in the right people and doing, we're, we're working with the DEP, we're gonna make sure that everything's done right. We, you know, we have the structural engineer out there today, as well as the third-party, um, um, engineer out there, so, yeah, no, we're gonna, we...
Sounds like it, and under control.
Yep.
Again, you know, teamwork makes the dream work, so...
Thanks for the update, Scott.
Okay.
Alright, uh, anything else within the town manager report?
Nope.
Hey, move for adjournment.
Alright. Motion to adjourn, and there is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, time being 7:35. I now, announced the board of selectmen meeting is adjourned.